At this time, I will reconvene into open session. This meeting of the Arlington Independent School Board of Trustees on September 21st, 2023, beginning at 7:19. Members of the public may access this meeting via AISD website at www.aisd.net. One or more trustee may participate in this meeting via video conference call. A quorum of the Board of Trustees will be physically present at the Administration Building. Thank you all for joining us tonight. Our board meetings are open to the public, and we welcome everyone and thank you for participating in public education. While our meetings are open to the public, this is a meeting, and we do have business to conduct, and disruptions will not be permitted. Anyone who disrupts the meeting or speaks when others are speaking may be asked to leave or be escorted by our security attending the meeting. We welcome civil input, but we must insist that we remain respectful and civil. Thank you for your cooperation. We'll start our meeting with the opening ceremony. Please join Ms. McMurro in leading us in the pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. You may be seated. Now, I'm not sure if everyone is aware, but Arlington Police Department lost a very special officer today in a traffic accident, Officer Darren McMichael. And so, we're going to have a moment of silence, and if you could please include Officer McMichael's family in your moment of silence, it would be appreciated. Thank you. Please silence your cell phones and electronic devices to avoid disruptions to those around The first on our agenda is the presentation of our SLAB leadership, Dr. Jarko.
Good evening, Board President Fowler, members of the Board, Dr. Wertz. Tonight, I've got the honor of introducing our 2324 Student Leadership Advisory Board. I have the honor of working with these distinguished young men and women over the course of the school year. The group of students is made up of our junior class presidents from each of our six comprehensive high schools, and also a member from Arlington College and Career and Arlington Collegiate High School. The purpose of the group of student leaders is to represent students' opinions across our district, provide the voice of those students to the Board of Trustees, and also to the AISD community at large. SLAB members assist in building relationships between students, the Board of Trustees, which they began tonight, campuses, senior staff, and the superintendent. They're assigned a partner board member, and they learned those partner board members this evening, and they meet regularly as a group with the Board of Trustees. While these young men and women have no official voting rights, their voice is extremely important to help serve in the business of understanding AISD and in their advisory role. The group is led by two students who served as SLAB members last year. They're both co-presidents. They were elected by the outgoing SLAB members to serve as this year's co-presidents. The SLAB president for this year, and I'll have him stand, are first Emiliano Gutierrez-Balonga. Emiliano was a SLAB member last student year, and he is from Lamar High School. And Abel Hernandez is our other co-president. He can't be present tonight because he is in classes at UTA, working on his associate's degree this evening. Also, our members have eight different members from our schools. I want to introduce each of those SLAB members. I'll have them stand as soon as we call their name and their school. So, starting first, from Arlington Collegiate High School, Andrea Salis. From Arlington College and Career, Miriam Silva. From Arlington High School, Michelle Correo. From Bowie High School, Demaris Rico. From Lamar High School, Kara Peterson. From Martin High School, Emma Grace Hurstrom. From Sam Houston, Tabitha Akantimi. And from Sagan High School, Audrey Seiya. Our SLAB members are also represented by parents, guardians, and relatives that may be watching online tonight. We want to thank them as well for their continued support in bringing such fine kids to represent public ed and also Arlington ISD. We know the support that the parents bring them has molded them into the fine, young, and talented young men and women they are. I look forward to working with them and look forward to continue having them provide perspective to the greater community at large about their experience and having them help serve. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Dr. Jarko. And we had such a pleasant dinner tonight, visiting with all of you, and we're so glad you were able to make it. We even gave them one of our special AISD pins. We told them they do not have to wear it every day. It won't hurt our feelings, but they have that special pin. So, we want to thank them for being here and for being so involved, and they are true leaders in the district, and we appreciate them so much. We know you all need to leave, so please excuse yourselves. I'm sure they have homework or tests to study for. The next item on our agenda is the public hearing. Schools First. Dr. Wertz?
Thank you, President Fowler. The Texas Education Agency has released its 2023 Financial Accountability Ratings for all Texas school districts, and state law requires that each district hold a public hearing to discuss its rating and to invite public comment on the rating. And Assistant Superintendent of Financial Services Carla Martin is here this evening. She'll present a report on our financial accountability rating, and following her report, we'll invite public comment on the rating. Carla, Ms. Martin.
Thank you, Dr. Wertz. Good evening, President Fowler, members of the Board. This evening, we'll be discussing the district's 2023 first rating and then holding a public hearing after. So, the FIRST stands for Financial Integrity Rating System of Texas. It's the state's school financial accountability rating system that holds school districts accountable for the quality of their financial management practices. It was developed in 1999 and amended in 2013, and the goal of this rating is to achieve quality performance in the management of the district's finances. The system is designed to encourage Texas public schools to better manage their financial There are two main requirements of the FIRST. The FIRST is to prepare an annual financial management report that includes our rating for the current year, the previous year, and then additional required disclosures. In addition, we're also required to hold a public hearing to give individuals an opportunity to comment on the report. The indicators are, the district is rated according to indicators developed by the commissioner, and it's tied to PIMS data that's submitted through the various data submissions throughout the school year and also our financial audit. The 2023 ratings contain 20 indicators addressing issues such as finance, debt management, student enrollment, fund balance, and other disclosures. For this year, only 16 of the 20 indicators were scored, so as we go through the presentation, I'll identify which indicators were not scored. An A-through-F scoring system is used, as indicated on the screen. F is given for scores below 70, and then, in addition, there are certain indicators where if we did not pass them, then the district automatically receives an F. So, we'll briefly go through these indicators and the results of each one. The first five indicators, 1 through 5, are considered critical indicators and are pass/fail indicators. AIC passed all indicators 1 through 4, with number 5 not being scored this year. Indicator 1 is asking if the annual financial report was submitted by the required date. The financial report was received by TEA on November 18, and it was due on December Indicator 2, AIC received a modified clean audit opinion on the annual financial report, passing this indicator. Indicator 3, AIC's annual financial report did not have any disclosures concerning default on debt agreements. Our debt payments were made within the requirements. Indicator 4, payments were made timely to all governmental agencies, and therefore, we passed this ceiling. This indicator. Now, indicator 5 has not been evaluated for several years based on the impact of the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, or GASB, changes that have been made in recent years and how, and the impact of those changes on that position. So, this was just rated as an A. Now, the next indicators, 6 through 14, are considered solvency indicators, and these were calculated based on data submitted from PIMS or in the annual financial audit. For indicator 6, AIC's fund balance has not decreased for the past three years. So, our assigned and unassigned fund balance of $282 million were greater than TEA's calculation of what 75 days of operational expenditures would be, and that would be around that $114 million. So, based on TEA's calculation, our operational expenditure, which is 145 days, 184 days, I'm so sorry, passes the ceiling. Indicator 7 compares our cash on hand to cover operating expenditures. Our calculated 203 days exceeds the 90 days, which gives AIC the maximum 10 points. Indicator 8 calculates the current ratio, and AIC's current ratio of 5.2556 is greater than the 3, which gives AIC the maximum 10 points. Indicator 9 measures if revenue equals or exceeds expenditures. AIC's revenue exceeded expenditures, which gives AIC the maximum 10 points. There is also a second part of the indicator that calculates that cash on hand, and that cash on hand is calculated in indicator 7, of 203 days is greater than that 60 days. Indicator 10 was not evaluated because the indicator calculations include years when the number of students were strongly impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic, which affected our Indicator 11 is the ratio between long-term liabilities to total assets. Our ratio of .6264 fell within the range of eight points and was less than the 0.60 threshold for 10 points. AIC is actively reviewing this ratio on paying down the debt and working with our financial advisors on savings opportunities, much like the recent refunding that we did that was built into the August issuance that saved the district around $1.2 million in future interest payments. Indicator 12, the ratio of 3.8293 is less than 4, which gives AIC the maximum 10 points. Indicator 13, the acceptable ratio for a district our size is less than 0.0855. Our AIC's administrative cost ratio is 0.0695, which gives AIC the maximum 10 points. Indicator 14 was also not evaluated because the indicator calculations included years when the number of students were strongly impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic, so maximum 10 points was given. The last five indicators, 15 through 20, are considered financial competence indicators. AIC passed all indicators or earned the maximum points awarded, with 15 not being evaluated this year. Indicator 15 was not evaluated because of changes to student enrollment due to the pandemic that began in 1920 and extended through the school year 2122. So, maximum five points was given. Indicator 16, the data submitted to TEA had a minimal variance in comparison to the data published in the annual financial report. Indicator 17, AIC's annual financial report was free of any instances of material weaknesses in internal controls over financial reporting, passing the indicator. Indicator 18, AIC's annual financial report was free of any instances of material noncompliance for grants, contracts, and laws related to local, state, or federal funds, passing the Indicator 19, AIC posted the required financial postings. And indicator 20, the district discussed property values and funding during the budget updates before the district adopted its fiscal year 22 budget. The calculation of the 20 ratings resulted in 98 points out of a possible 100, earning the district's superior achievement. There are also additional reporting requirements and disclosures. The superintendent did not receive payment for consulting or other personal services during the 2122 school year. The superintendent and board members did not receive any gifts with economic value of $250 or more in the aggregate, and there were no business transactions between the school district and board members in fiscal year 22. In addition, a copy of the superintendent's most recent contract may be found on our website, and it's also included in the annual financial management report. The final reporting disclosure is for payments incurred for travel and other functions related to official school district business. For the period ending June 30, 2022, the superintendent and board travel, the superintendent and board travel and other expenses total $25,759.86. Dr. Wertz, this concludes my portion of the report, and I'll turn it over to you for the public hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Ms. Fowler?
Thank you, Dr. Wertz. Thank you, Ms. Martin, very much. Ms. Forsberg, do we have anyone registered to speak on this topic?
No, there are no registered speakers for a public hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Forsberg. The public hearing for state financial accountability rating is now closed. The next item on our agenda is the open forum for agenda items. Ms. Forsberg, do we have anyone registered to speak on agenda items?
Yes, ma'am. We have one registered speaker for agenda items.
Thank you, Ms. Forsberg. We'll now call upon Richard Weber. Welcome, Mr. Weber. This is a routine part of the school board's agenda for regularly scheduled meetings. This segment of the meeting provides citizens with an opportunity to share their views with the trustees on items that are on the agenda tonight. It is not intended to be a discussion or a debate, and trustees will not reply to the speaker. Derogatory comments aimed at an individual will not be tolerated. Personnel matters are not appropriate subjects for an open forum, and you will have two minutes to speak, and Ms. Forsberg will notify you when your time is up. Welcome, Mr. Weber.
Hello. I am speaking in opposition of joining a lawsuit in discussion action item A. If I may, a UT football analogy. At the start of the year, judging any generic year, expectations are high. In this particular year, talent may have been overstated. They're playing Cupcake U for the first game. Well, Cupcake U has totally changed its coaching staff. They work their game plan to perfection. They anticipate every UT adjustment and make the appropriate changes. The clock clicks down, and they've hand UT its first defeat. Now, the whining starts. We are suing because Cupcake U changed their offense, changed their defense, and we didn't have any game feel. Really? Come on. It just made me sick, the amount of whining that was going on at the last meeting by this board and the administration. Stop the whining. AIC lost. Over half the students failed the test. Failed being not at grade level. So, over half the students failed the test. Half that, half, or over half, failed it so bad, they weren't even close to passing. We need to start working on identifying the problems and fixing the problems. I look very forward to the coming improvement plan discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. Next on our agenda are action items. Dr. Wertz?
Thank you, President Fowler. This evening, we bring an action item consideration, we bring an action item consideration of a resolution regarding bond defeasance or a redemption, which is paying down debt early, and I'll ask Ms. Moss to introduce this topic, and then we also have an expert here, Mr. Macha from our financial advisor, Hilltop Securities, that will be here to join us for the discussion. Ms. Moss?
Thank you, Dr. Wertz. Good evening, President Fowler and trustees. We do have Mr. Eric Maha of Hilltop Securities with us this evening. He, Hilltop represents AISD as our financial advisors for our bond work. They also work very closely with our finance team on our bond sales, our refunding, and our redemptions. We work with Mr. Maha and Mr. Williford that you're familiar with in projecting our values and modeling out our INS tax rate. We are presenting a resolution for your consideration tonight, directing the defeasance and/or redemption of certain outstanding unlimited tax bonds, and appointing me and Mrs. Martin to work with the financial advisors to identify available opportunities. As in the past, once we identify the prepayment, are these opportunities, we'll come back to the board and let you know what we've identified before moving forward. Mr. Maha is here. He's going to share some more details about this, and he'll be here to answer any questions that you may have.
Welcome, Mr. Maha.
Thank you. Good evening, President Fowler, members of the Board, Dr. Wertz. As Ms. Moss mentioned, tonight's item is a resolution to consider defeasance or redemption of bonds next year, and really what this does, very similar to how the board passed a similar resolution last year, this time, it allows the district to manage a constant tax rate is really what it does. So, as property values rise each year, staff, we look at the district's debt payments next year, property values, and we determine a tax rate. And keeping in mind, the district still has some voted authority that it's still in the process of issuing, so the intent here is to maintain a constant tax rate. And by doing that, we project the district will produce some excess revenue next year to the Debt Service Fund, and really, once that money goes into the Debt Service Fund, it can only be used for bond payments. So, really, the most economical method of that is to take that excess at some point next year and to retire bonds early, and that would be done through defeasance. And just looking ahead, we've identified the district's Series 2015 bonds, so sometime next year, once tax collections are in hand, we'll work with staff and select which maturities to refund or to fees. We would have to place that money into an escrow fund until the call date. The call date on these particular bonds is in 2025, but the good thing is now that we're actually able to earn a little interest on these escrow funds until the call date, and so the interest earned would offset the interest being paid, and so you get the most pain for your buck by defeating. The bonds that were identified, currently, you all are paying at 3.34%, and we can earn up to that in today's current market. And so, just some quick numbers, we're estimating about $7 million will be available next year. Of course, that will depend on property tax collections, and then also that fund's earning interest along the way, and so we'll take a look at that. If we were to defeeze $7 million next year, we estimate that would save the district $4.3 million in future interest costs, so you can see the benefit in doing that, and it's also able to maintain that constant tax rate. And as Ms. Moss mentioned, the resolution would defer to staff next year, once property value collections are in, to make that determination on when to defees. Like I said, this is very similar to last year, so if there's any questions or...
Do we have any trustees with questions or comments? Mr. Will Banks?
Thank you, President Fowler, and given the savings that we received just recently from the decision to go through defeasance or redemption last year, this is definitely in the best interests of our taxpayers and also to reduce our long-term liability. So, if there are no other questions or concerns, I'm ready to make a motion.
Dr. Rice?
Thank you, President Fowler, and I agree with what you stated, Mr. Will Banks, and certainly in support of this. Thank you for providing the numbers. This kind of relates to the Schools First public hearing that just closed. Hats off to our finance department for being great fiscal stewards of taxpayer dollars. On that report, I don't know that you mentioned it, but I think the district has had that superior rating every single year, at least since I've been on the board. That's 15 years in a row right there, so congratulations on that. And I know this isn't on this topic, but also related to that, thank you for that presentation. There has not been such a detailed presentation on the Schools First report before, so I really appreciated that open transparency again for the public. And as far as the dollars for the savings on these bonds, what a wonderful thing to be able to do. The voters trust us, have entrusted us with tax dollars, have supported us through bond referendums, and they're big dollars, and anything that we can do to yield some of that back to our taxpayers is an absolute win, and to do it what now is going to be two years in a row, it's pretty rare, if you watch board meetings around the state. So, thank you for what you do in constantly monitoring that for us and creating these giving-back opportunities.
Thank you, Dr. Rice. Any other board members with questions or comments? Mr. Will Banks?
Thank you, Dr. Rice. And with that, I move to approve the resolution directing the defeasance and/or redemption of certain Arlington Independent School District outstanding unlimited tax bonds on one or more occasions, appointing an authorized officer and delegating to the authorized officer the authority to make all determinations required to effectuate such defeasance and/or redemption and enacting other provisions relating to the subject.
Thank you, Mr. Will Banks. I have a motion for Mr. Will Banks. Do I have a second? I have a second for Ms. McMurro. Motion carries. Thank you. Action item B, considering the 2023 tax rate adoption. Dr. Wertz?
Thank you, President Fowler. The next action item for the board to consider is the 2023 tax rate adoption. Once again, we have Ms. Martin here to present the information. Ms. Martin.
Thank you, Dr. Wertz. Hello again. So, this time, we'll be discussing the proposed tax rate and the budget adoption process. This is just a highlight of the budget and tax rate adoption timeline. So far, we met in June and held a public meeting to discuss the budget and the proposed tax rate. We then received the certified values from Tarrant Appraisal District in July. Using those values, we submitted the local property value survey to TEA, which determined our maximum compressed tax rate. Today, we'll be proposing the tax rate for adoption. The approved tax rate will be provided to Tarrant County Tax Office to calculate the levy, which is the amount that will be due for taxes. The district's total tax rate is comprised of two components. There's the MNO, Maintenance and Operations. This funds all school district day-to-day operations, including instruction, curriculum, teachers, and staff compensation. The other part is our interest in sinking, or INS. This is strictly used to pay off bond debt and cannot be used for anything else. Combined, these two rates make up the total rate. So, we'll be... So we'll be discussing the various components of these two tax rates today. For the M and O tax rate, this is allocated into three portions of the F S P formula. The first part is Tier One, it's the maximum compressed tax rate. This is determined by T E A. Then there's also Tier Two, split into Level One and Level Two. They're the golden pennies, and this is a maximum of eight pennies. Most districts had access to the first four pennies through board approval. And then the next fifth penny could also be accessed through board approval, but pennies six through eight needed a tax election. The next set of pennies would be your copper pennies, and this is a maximum of nine pennies. This is also accessible only by a tax election. The district's voters approved a tax ratification election and gave us access to all 17 pennies. We do want to note that golden pennies are not subject to recapture, but copper pennies are. And currently, I know in the last meeting, we were identified as a recaptured district, but we are only identified recapture at the copper penny level because of those additional nine pennies. All right. So the maximum compressed tax rate, or M C R, this was established as part of House Bill Three in 2019. Compression started in 2021 school year, and it was individual districts start compressing based on local property value growth that's more than 2.5%. Or there's the statewide compression based on estimated statewide average growth. And this is estimated by the Texas Comptroller in legislative session. This determines the ceiling and the floor. The floor is 90% of the ceiling, and that creates a 10% equity band of a tax range. Therefore, the range of that M C R, it will lie between that floor and ceiling. So Tier One tax rates, they'll fall within that range proportionally to increases in local tax value. So what does that look like for A I S D? So for tax year 2023, the state's property value growth was at 4.43%. A I S D's local value growth, based on the July certified values, at the 40,000 home sit exemption, because we want to have an apples-to-apples comparison from the previous year, was at 11.5%. So because 11.5 is greater than 4.43, then that means our M C R is going to compress within that range, which was determined of a ceiling of 0.6880 and a floor of 6.192. So that just means if our local growth was only 2%, more likely than not, we would be at the top part of that ceiling. But if the growth was a lot more, it starts compressing us down, but you don't have a rate lower than 0.6192. So we're in the middle of that, which we'll have here. So this table shows A I S D's historical M C R. Before House Bill Three, the Tier One max tax rate was a dollar. When H B Three passed in 2019, the Tier One max rate was reduced statewide by 7%, or seven pennies. So as you can see, A I S D went from a dollar to 93 cents. Then compression started in the 2021 school year. In 2021, the statewide compression brought that range from that 9164 to 0.8247. A I S D's property value growth was 1.8%, which is lower than 2.5 that I was mentioning. And so therefore, we didn't receive additional compression. So you can see our tax rate was right there at that ceiling. But then, throughout the years, 21, 22, 22, 23, our value growth were higher than that. So it was creating that compression, and so we fell for 0.8901, which is within that range in 21, 22. And then last year, we were 0.8380, which again was within that range of 0.8941 and 0.8046. I know, it's a lot of pennies. Sorry. So for 23, 24, the ceiling and the floor moved down based on estimated statewide average growth, and then also additional compression that occurred during a special session. So that brought the ceiling down to 0.6880 and the floor at 0.6192. With the local value growth of the 11.5% at our 40,000 home sit exemption, because we want apples-to-apples, the T E A determined and calculated our M C R to be at 0.6549, and this is 18.31 cents less than the previous year. So with the M C R of 0.6549, we then apply the additional golden pennies. So we have all eight. And then the copper pennies, which is an additional nine, for total additional 17 cents. As you can see from this table, A I S D had the first four golden pennies that were set by board action in the past. Then in 2020, the V A T R E passed that accessed the remaining 13 cents for the maximum additional pennies allowed for the total 17 cents. So if you're looking at the highlighted row of 23, 24, this brings our total M and O tax rate at 0.8249, which is 18.31 cents less than prior year's tax rate of 1,0080. As mentioned, the I N S rate is strictly used to pay off bond debt and cannot be used for anything else. You are seeing a penny decrease to the proposed I N S rate to be 0.2907. This rate includes the annual principal interest payment obligations of the district along with the additional defeasance that you all just approved. So altogether, the M and O tax rate is going to be reduced by 0.81831, so 18.31 cents, and the I N S tax rate is reduced by a penny for a total tax rate of 19.31 cents less than last year. So with that, it would be an M and O tax rate of 0.8249, an I N S tax rate of 0.2907 for a total tax rate of 1.1156. Here's another view of A I S D's tax rate history. The gray bars show the M and O tax rate. The teal bars show the I N S tax rate with the total tax rate at the top. We were historically at a dollar four. Then you see the seven cent reduction due to House Bill Three in 1920, then the V A T R E in 2021, but with compression and an additional 13 pennies. But then, as you can see from there, the tax rate has lowered due to that statewide compression. The no new revenue rate is the rate that would theoretically produce a tax levy similar to last year. And based on our calculation, the proposed total tax rate of $1,1156 would meet our, is compared to the no new revenue rate that's calculated at 1.1484. This is the rate that would theoretically produce a similar levy to last year. So for fiscal year 24, our proposed total rate is less than the no new revenue rate, which can also mean the levy will be less than last year, that's really saying, by In addition to the no new revenue rate, there's a no new revenue M and O tax rate. This is just the M and O portion of the no new revenue rate. And as you can see, that is also less than the, our proposed M and O tax rate of 0.8249 is also less than the no new revenue M and O tax rate. In addition to the comparison of the no new revenue M and O rate, we're also required to calculate the effect of the tax rate on a $100,000 home. With the proposed M and O tax rate of 0.8249 compared to last year's M and O tax rate of 1,0080, this would be a difference in taxes for a $100,000 home is $183.10 less than previous year. Finally, we're also required to compare current year and previous year values based on the July certified values. The tax rate, if applied to the total taxable value, will have an M and O levy that is going to be less than previous year. After this tax rate adoption, we'll provide the approved tax rate to Tarrant County Tax Office, which determines the tax rule and does the actual calculation for the tax levy for the year. As we previously shared in the August 17 meeting, the second special session of the ADA Texas Legislature increased the state mandatory homestead exemption applicable to school districts from 40,000 to 100,000. And this creates a state aid to hold districts harmless for the decrease in local tax revenue. Because this is a constitutional amendment, it will be on the November 7, 2023 ballot, and a yes vote would support amending the state constitution to increase the homestead exemption. We were informed by Tarrant County Tax Office that tax statements will be sent out with the 100,000 exemption. And that is what we're going to be using for our October budget amendment that we'll be taking to the board. I do want to point out, because of the shared interaction between state and local funding, and we shared this in the previous meeting, it just shifts that funding from state to state, and the net effect is roughly about less than 1% change. So if you all don't have any questions, we do recommend approval of the tax rate ordinance as presented.
Do I have any trustees with questions or comments? Dr. Rice?
Thank you, President Fowler. Thank you very much for the presentation, the information. We have not seen a tax rate on this dais as a vote before, where we're actually voting with decreasing the effective tax rate, or now the terminology of the day, the no new revenue tax rate, by over 3.25 cents. That's pretty significant. I have not seen that in all of my years. So kudos to you, and then again, the finance department for managing things in a tight environment. The compression provided by the state is great. As you just stated, it shifts from our locals to the state. Ultimately, there's still a funding issue statewide that I hope our legislature pays attention to. But here locally, it's wonderful to be able to let our citizens know that they are going to be experiencing a bit of relief because of this, as I said, over 3.25 cents, and that's fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rice. Anyone else? Thank you so much, Ms. Martin. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion to approve or to adopt? Ms. Haynes?
Thank you, President Fowler. I move for the adoption of a property tax rate of 1.1156.
Thank you, Ms. Haynes. I have a motion for Ms. Haynes. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Thank you, Mr. Will Banks. Please vote. Motion carries. Thank you. Next on the agenda is action item. Dr. Wertz?
Thank you, President Fowler. So as you know, we've discussed over several meetings the fact that the accountability system has changed and that many of the rules that are still under development are being applied retroactively to results from last year. So tonight, we have a resolution to share with the board, and we have Dr. Buell, our interim chief academic officer here, to share this item and to answer questions.
Good evening, President Fowler, members of the board, Dr. Wertz. I'm here tonight to talk about the A to F accountability resolution and provide you some information regarding that. The first thing I want to start with, and we've talked about it in some previous meetings, are some major changes to the accountability system that will impact our district rating and the rating for our campuses. The first one is the increased scaling difficulty of our C C M R readiness metrics. It went up from 2022 to 2023 from 60% to 88% to earn an A rating. That's one example. Another is that all of our students took a newly redesigned STAR E O C and E O C assessment in 2023. There were a lot of differences in the type of test that this was, including the writing component, the technology enhanced items that were in there, many different things. It was new to our students. In addition, all of our students, for the first time, took the test online. We know that that presents a difference as well. In addition, our district rating will be calculated differently this year. Our campus results will go into our district rating proportionally with the size of the campus. And our student groups in Domain Three have also changed this year. So you can see with these changes, we're looking at really apples and oranges. So with that, there's some basis of concern, and I'll present that with three major points. The first is that T E A has retroactively changed the rules. And these rules impact the performance ratings of our district and also our schools, and lowers the A to F performance ratings. The other is that districts have not received advance notice of what these rules are and the methodologies that would be applied in determining what our accountability rating is. And third, not having this information limits a district's ability to take strategic actions to ensure improvements in that performance rating throughout the year. So what is our accountability rating in Arlington I S D? We don't know yet. And so that's part of what we're talking about tonight. The first point I want to make is that the Texas Education Code does require that the Commissioner of Education finalize the performance ratings and make them publicly available by August 15th, based on the measures, the methods, and the procedures that were in place at the beginning of the year. Then, on September 13th of this year, the districts were notified by T E A that they were postponing the release of these ratings for approximately one month to allow them to reexamine the baseline data in the calculation of student progress, basically saying that in the prior year, it was kind of an anomaly year. And so they're going to go back and look at how that was calculated, because perhaps it is influencing these scores. So no specific date has been announced for the release of these ratings, but we do anticipate that we will have some kind of a release in November. And again, I want to say, we're talking about a test that our students took last year, and we still lack this information. So tonight, I want to talk about the accountability resolution. And we're asking you to consider the adoption of a resolution to authorize the district administration to join the litigation against the Texas Education Agency as an intervenor to challenge T E A's failure to provide the district advance notice of accountability performance, the methods, the measures, the procedures that are being applied as part of the A to F accountability system for the 2022-23 school year before the start of the school year, and that this is in violation of state law. On the screen, I've noted some of the over 50 districts across the state who are making a similar resolution have joined this lawsuit. You'll see many of our neighboring districts have done that well. Again, not an exhausted list. We know that people are joining this every day. So our recommendation is that the administration recommend that the board approve the resolution as presented, and I do believe that you all have a copy of that. Are there any questions?
Do we have any trustees with questions or comments? Mr. Chapa?
Thank you, President Fowler. And Dr. Buell, and everybody else here, has listened to me complain, argue against, whine about the things that are going on with the accountability system. And, you know, this district historically has been very reluctant to join these types of lawsuits because we believe in using the political process. We have an extensive legislative agenda that accountability is a part of. We visit with our state legislators, and we have been told for many years that there's going to be changes to the accountability system for the better. that there's going to be changes to the accountability system for the better. And it seems like nonetheless, each year, it gets more complicated, and it gets not harder. Because once you know what you need to do, so to speak, jump through the hoops, we've demonstrated that we can do that. And historically, we've done fairly well on the accountability ratings. I mean, before we went through A through F, I think it was 43% of our campuses earned some sort of academic distinction on the prior test. We've been in the mid-to-high 80s once the A-through-F system came out. And then there were significant challenges with that because of COVID. But what's concerning is that as complex as this system has become for us, and as honest as it is, and it took Dr. Lopez an hour and a half, a few meetings ago, just to explain how this system works. It's not what I grew up with, maybe, which is sort of, there was a pass-fail system, and it was designed to measure sort of a minimum standard of achievement. And you either pass, your kids either met it or they didn't. And I was talking to someone recently who used to be a principal, who said that, you know, back in that day, they, as a principal, could, you know, use that data meaningfully. And as a principal, they could figure it out. And now, it's almost impossible for a principal and let alone a data and research department to do something about it. So if we have all those gripes and we set those just aside, because we've gone over that quite a bit the last few meetings, what I think is different about this, and the reason that I'm willing to vote in favor of joining this lawsuit, and not just because I'm a lawyer and I like lawsuits as a general matter in my day job, is we're talking about accountability. And there are rules as to how this accountability system can be implemented. And it seems like there's a very strong case to be made that the commissioner did not follow those rules in rolling out this new accountability system. And if we are going to be, as educators, held accountable for, in many cases, things beyond our control, but some of the things that are in control, we need to know what those things are in advance. And the rules are laid out for how that is supposed to be done. And it doesn't appear that the commissioner did them. So if we're going to be held accountable, I think it's fair to hold this educational bureaucracy at the state level accountable through a lawsuit that if you look at the list of districts that have already joined on that you posted, this isn't a partisan issue. This is not Republican and Democratic districts following in different areas, falling in different directions. There's this serious problem here. And when our state-level officials, who have so much authority over the day-to-day workings of our district and districts across the state, can't follow their own rules, can't follow the state law, we don't have much recourse except to go to a court of law to say that what they're doing was not accordance with the protocol that they should have followed. And in my mind, that's what joining this lawsuit means. We can make the political arguments and the technical arguments about the accountability system. We can save them for another day. But from where I'm sitting today, this lawsuit is simply about holding the state to account for the rules that it was supposed to follow. And there's a very strong argument to be made that they did not. And I think this district is going to, would be right to use its voice to join pretty much the only thing we have at this point, because we've been talking about this for a long time, to get the state to do the right reason. And so I hope that the board will join me in supporting this resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Chapa. Dr. Raj?
Come back, Dr. Raj. Come back, Dr. Raj. Don't walk away from me.
I'm here. Thank you, President Fowler. Thank you, Dr. Buell, for laying that out. And I appreciate Mr. Chapa's comments. We, as a district, have been very engaged in advocating for our district, for our community in numerous ways. And over the years, we have been lauded statewide for our advocacy, for our nuanced approach to advocacy, with very little exception. And I think tonight is one of those exceptions. Back when we had school finance issues, funding issues and such, there were lawsuits, a few of them filed by different groups. And we were part of one of those. We made the decision then that this is more than a nuanced opportunity. We need to stand up for our students, for our community. And through one of the organizations, we're involved and went forward. So in my time, this would be only the second time that we've actually stepped up to do this level. There is a significant difference of not wanting to be held accountable and whining, to use words that were used before, that we don't want to be judged, we just need to deal with it and move on. No, this district has always held high, we want high standards, we want accountability. We just would like everybody to play fair. In this situation, we don't want to be held to a standard which is essentially breaking the law. That's what it is. It's in the Education Code, plain and simple. You had it there in that slide. So, and I believe you stated over 50 districts. I think that number as of today is 80 or higher. So it's going up. We have to do what we need to do for Arlington, for our community. We heard analogies, or an analogy earlier. I would like to offer, since analogies are a thing, a different analogy, sticking with football, would be going to Patrick Mahomes and the Kansas City Chiefs right now and saying, hey, Pat, you know that Super Bowl against the Eagles last year? You didn't actually win. We just changed the rules, let you know, we're changing the rules for that game. They apply to that game. And because of such, you know what? You didn't really score those points that you and your team, watching the plays, watching the film footage, thought you won. No, you didn't actually win. The Eagles won. That's what this is. And we need to do something about that.
And going forward, it'll be synchronized winning.
You say that. So, again, this is not something that we take lightly. For me personally, I have grappled with this back and forth. Do we do this? What is the benefit? What is the risk-reward ratio? But there has to be a point in time where we put our foot down and say, look, this is not just about the accountability system breaking the law. I mean, it is, but it is also because of what is going to potentially happen to our community. This affects our community. This affects our businesses. This affects our economic viability as a community. And if you haven't heard me say it, you're deaf. I have always said, I'm in this for the economic viability of our community. I'm in it for the kids. I'm in it for the economic viability. I have always said that. And there's nothing that defines that more than what we're about to vote on tonight. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Raj. Mr. Will Banks?
Thank you, President Fowler. And I too, I'm all for accountability. We need to measure in order to get better. Accountability is a good thing. But the system we have now has been changed so far removed from the benefit it provides in providing that timely feedback that teachers can use in a meaningful way to make continuous improvement and students can use in a meaningful way to make improvement. And you know what? Our students are making great strides. When you look at where they were before the pandemic and where they are now, and how they're working hard to get back and surpass and meet the goals that we have adopted as a board for them to reach. And this, you know, as you said, this is plainly against the rules. The statute clearly states, the TEA, they're going to change the system, needs to notify school districts at the beginning of the school year in which that test is administered. That did not happen. This lawsuit has merit and has a good chance. And not only that, I don't know that I believe in conspiracy theories, but it was said recently down in Austin, there are no coincidences in Austin. And when you look at the timing, that this major overhaul occurred to the system, it was made harder. You look at the state results and you see that overall in the state, that reading has a precipitous drop in the scores. Not in Arlington ISD, across the state. And then you look at the massive overhaul, not a refresh, of the accountability system and see the effect that it has, just applying the new rules to our old data and other districts across the state have done. And then comes the conclusion, it's going to have a deleterious effect on our communities and really take the wind out of our teachers and our students that have worked so hard. That's not right. When you look at that and know that these scores from this new accountability system, this new test are going to come out, work scheduled to come out right before the governor was going to call a special session on vouchers. I'm not a conspiracy theorist, but it begs the question. But the commissioner himself realized that the system is flawed. He just recently, on September 13, came back and realized the way the system is designed, with the growth that we saw last year, was going to have a drastic deleterious effect on outcomes across the state that they didn't even predict how bad it was going to be. It is a flawed system. Our students are greater than one test given on one day in April can measure. And especially when it's combined with a grading system as complicated and complex and flawed as this one. So I think we have no choice but to join this lawsuit. And I will happily be voting yes.
Thank you, Mr. Will Banks. Ms. McMurro?
Thank you, President Fowler. Yes, I agree with everything that's already been stated. And Dr. Raj mentioned sticking with what our core values have been. And, you know, one of mine, even when campaigning, I vowed to voters that I would take a stand against the overemphasis on high-stakes testing. And we're really at that point right now where school districts, we're not regulating a test. It's regulating us to an extent that is so out of control, as Mr. Will Banks alluded to. And I very quickly just want to give a personal example. You know, my son is in fourth grade this year. At the age of two, he was diagnosed with autism. And, you know, before he was old enough for public school, we went through speech therapy, ABA therapy. We really didn't have a playbook for this. We didn't know what his future was going to look like. And it was when he started school in Arlington ISD with PPCD, and that program, the acronym is now different, it's ESCE, blended pre-K at Dunn Elementary, and then he came over to JB Little for that PPCD program. Every year, I saw him thrive more. He now is in fourth grade. He's in general education. He falls asleep reading every night. His principal, his teachers, his teaching assistants, everyone on his ARD committee, I have seen over the years just the consistent care and dedication and the improved student outcomes that he has shown. And, you know, on top of that, his teachers come to a basketball game when he invites them. Kids at his school treat him with kindness, and that's something that the adults in the school model. I'm just one of thousands, tens of thousands of stories that can be told like that over the years in Arlington ISD. And even though there's no measure or metric for that, that school gets an A in my book. And that is just one of the many examples that I can share. But we have to consider our kids. We have to consider what is best for kids. And I do not support putting any more undue pressure, unfair pressure, on our teachers and our staff and our leaders over this test. So I agree with everything that's already been stated. I really do appreciate our board for trying to be proactive before we got to this point. We've tried to reason with our legislators. Many of them have, you know, have definitely leveled with us. But at this time, we need to be very direct with our Commissioner of Education and continue to do all we can at the local level. So I too agree with joining this lawsuit for all the reasons that were already stated. And at this time, I'd like to read a resolution for us to consider. This will be our resolution of the Board of Trustees for the Arlington Independent School District regarding the A-through-F accountability system. Whereas, the A-through-F accountability system is a statewide rating system established by the Texas Legislature to provide information about the academic performance of Texas public schools. And whereas, the Texas Legislature in Texas Education Code 39.054 has granted broad authority to the Commissioner of the Texas Education Agency to adopt rules to evaluate school district and campus performance and assign each district and campus an overall performance rating of A, B, C, D, or F. And whereas, the current A-through-F accountability system was designed by the current commissioner. And whereas, despite lack of requirement in the statute that the commissioner change the accountability system on any particular schedule, the commissioner has stated that the A-through-F accountability system should be revised every five years. And whereas, the commissioner intends to impose, on a retroactive basis, a new accountability system for the 2022-23 school year, which has still yet to be finalized. And whereas, the changes made by the commissioner are intended to be applied to graduating classes who have already graduated from the Arlington Independent School District. And whereas, the commissioner intends to release ratings for the 2022-23 school year using retroactive updates to the accountability system that would lower the rating of thousands of schools. And whereas, the commissioner still has not finalized the rules and methodologies that will be used to evaluate schools for the 2022-23 school year or the 2023-24 school year. And whereas, in violation of state law, the 2022-2023 school year, the commissioner failed to provide school districts a document in simple, accessible format that explains the accountability performance measures, methods, and procedures that will be applied for the 2022-2023 school year. And whereas, in violation of state law, in the 2023-2024 school year, the commissioner has failed to provide school districts a document in, oh, sorry, I already read that. I'm going to move on to the next one. Whereas, the district believes the A-through-F accountability system should be adjusted to raise standards, but only with appropriate advance notice. And whereas, the purpose of the A-through-F accountability system is to provide transparency and clarity for schools, parents, and the community at large about the performance of Texas public schools in relation to state expectations. And whereas, contrary to the purpose of transparency regarding school performance, the ratings intended to be issued by the commissioner under the 2022-2023 school year will give the appearance that schools with higher levels of student achievement are actually declining in performance. Whereas, the failure of the commissioner to comply with state law and provide, the failure of the commissioner to comply with state law and provide an explanation of the measures, methods, and procedures to be used during the 2022-2023 school year prevented the district from appropriately adjusting its practices and allocation of resources in accordance with state expectations. And whereas, the retroactive application of new measures, methods, and procedures without the required advance notice represents harm to the district and its community because it gives the appearance of declining school performance, which impacts enrollment, property values, the application of potential sanctions by the commissioner, and the effective use of resources. And whereas, several Texas school districts have filed a lawsuit seeking an injunction to prevent the commissioner from issuing new ratings using the retroactively applied, yet-to-be-finalized measures, methods, and procedures. And whereas, the district agrees with the arguments laid out in the lawsuit and believes the intention of the commissioner to issue ratings using retroactively applied, yet-to-be finalized, oh, I'm sorry, I read that one, nope, yet-to-be-finalized measures, methods, and procedures to be in contravention of state policy regarding- procedures to be in contravention of state policy regarding the A through F accountability system and in violation of the law. Now therefore, be it resolved, that all the above referenced paragraphs, findings, and recitals are incorporated in, into and made part of this resolution. The Arlington Independent School District Board directs and authorizes the superintendent to take the necessary steps to join the litigation, challenging of the Commissioner's failure to provide Texas school districts advance notice of the measures, methods, and procedures to be used in the 2022, 2023, and 2023-2024 school years and prior to the start of each of these school years in violation of state law. Arlington Independent School District Board urges the Commissioner to comply with state law and issue ratings for the 2022, 2023, and 2023-2024 school years utilizing the existing measures, methods, and procedures of which school districts had notice of in accordance with state law. I move to approve this resolution.
Thank you so much, Ms. McMurro. So we have a motion for Ms. McMurro. Do we have a second? Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Please vote.
All votes affirmative, the motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Dr. Buell.
Thank you.
We appreciate you. We now move to discussion action item B. Dr. Wertz?
Thank you, President Fowler. Our next item is for the board to consider the 2023-2024 District Improvement Plan's Goals and Performance Objectives, as well as the reporting timeline. We bring this annually as we evaluate our students' achievement and consider the next steps as we try to continue to work with them to improve their academic outcomes. We have Dr. Lopez here this evening to share the details and to answer questions. Dr. Lopez?
Good evening, President Fowler, members of the board, and Dr. Wertz. Thank you for your time. I'm going to share the twenty-three, twenty-four House Bill III goals, the DIP update and reporting timeline. So going to move through House Bill III goals first, then to the DIP, and then to the reporting timeline. So for the House Bill III goal update considerations, just want to give you all a little bit of information. For kindergarten through second-grade goals, we're bringing those forward for the first time to y'all. This is newly available because of the baseline data that we collected in the 2023 school year on our M-class and M-class lectura screener, and then our NWEA map math screener. For our third grade through our high school subject, uh, STAR subjects, that's going to be goal updates, and that's based on the 2023 data from the STAR redesigned test. And then also for third through high school STAR goals, in prior years, they have only been at the approaches level, but we've expanded those beyond simply approaches, which, yes, that is the passing the test, to include additionally meets and masters goals. And so as we've revised those, I want to point out for our eighth-grade goals, fifth and eighth-grade goals, those align with the initial 2019 administration. So in, in 2019, there was SSI opportunity, and so students would test in April. If they did not pass, they would test again in May. If they did not pass, they'd test again in June. And that was only offered at fifth and eighth grade. And so originally, 2019 data is reporting out April and May because there were two administrations available for students to take the test. That's no longer an option. And so the eighth-grade goals have been updated to the first administration of the STAR test in 2019. So that will be a change that you'll see on the presentation. All right. So I've broken up House Bill III into chunks, so going to start off with all the reading goals. The, the one that hasn't changed is, we'll start with pre-K four literacy. And so this is the one that has not changed and is not new. The goal this last year was to increase the percentage of our pre-K four students scoring on track from sixty-four to sixty-eight percent. We exceeded that goal, and we discussed that last time. They, we had seventy-four percent of our students be considered on track for reading. And originally, their goal then for this year was going to be seventy-three percent, then seventy-seven percent in twenty-five, and eighty percent in twenty-six. We've updated the seventy-three percent to seventy-five percent simply because we exceeded that. We did not redo all of the goals, just increased this one year so that we're at least making a one percent gain. And so as with all the House Bill III goals that we present to you, they are broken apart by subgroup. So all the five years are here, the remaining three being from the, the 2024 year and then the twenty-five and twenty-six grade columns. Then moving into kindergarten literacy, this is our M-class and M-class lectura screener. And so these goals are all new. So the baseline data that was collected at the end of the school year in 2023, we had sixty-three percent of our students score at or above benchmark on the test. And again, that's both Spanish and English. And so our goal would then be to get to sixty-eight percent this year, seventy-two percent in year two, and then seventy-five percent in year three. And this is that information broken out by subgroup. Blue bar, or the blue box around the 2024 school year, so that would be the end of this year. First-grade literacy. So again, baseline data collected in twenty-three, we had our students sixty-one percent that were at or above benchmark at the end of the school year in 2023. So we'd like to move up to sixty-seven percent at the end of this year, then seventy-two in twenty-five, seventy-five percent in 2026. And then this shows those goals broken out by subgroup. For our second graders, still M-class and M-class lectura, would like to increase the percentage of our students who increase at or above benchmark from fifty-six percent this year to sixty-four percent, then next year seventy-one percent, and then in 2026, seventy-five percent. And that is broken out by subgroup. So for all of our kinder through second literacy goals, all moving towards getting to seventy-five percent in three years. Now moving from screener data into STAR data. So these were goals that have been expanded to include more than just one level, so not just approaches are better, but meets are better, and then also masters. And so you can see, we have the 2019 data on the left-hand side of our table. Then moving into 2021, we didn't test in 2020, that's indicated on the line graph on the right-hand side. Then 2022, we're calling 2023 a baseline since the test was redesigned, and all of the reading tests now incorporate writing components that they didn't have before. So then now it's, it's not five-year goals anymore because the end goal was going to be 2026, so the three-year goals are now included. So year one, we're restarting, is 2024. So the end of this year, we'd like to get to sixty-eight percent approaches, forty-two percent meets, and fourteen percent masters. And then the remaining columns, twenty-five and twenty-six, show additional growth in those years. This has a lot, but this is those three performance levels broken out by subgroup for the next three years. And then, of course, includes, in the light blue on the left-hand side, what we actually did by the subgroup, by the performance level at the end of the school year this year. Now for STAR, for eighth-grade reading, so you'll notice that in 2019, the values are higher than, than what they are going to be by the 2026 school year. And that's because, again, there's two administrations for 2019 data, and now we only have one administration. So what we did was moved the goal to what would happen based on the primary administration in 2019. And so the 2026, the seventy-eight percent, fifty-one percent, and twenty-three percent, those are moving back to what we did in the primary administration. This year, however, looking to go, increase to seventy-six percent at approaches or above, forty-seven percent at meets or above, and then twenty-one percent at masters. And then that is broken apart by performance level, subgroup, and remaining years. STAR E O C, English one. So this includes our, our ninth-grade students only. And so we're looking to move up to seventy-two percent for approaches, fifty-four percent for meets, and fourteen percent for masters. There's a note on the table that the 2019 data represents all students, so ninth, tenth, eleventh, and twelfth, whereas twenty-one through twenty-six is the subset, which is only the ninth-grade kiddos that we base the goals on. And then this is broken out by the performance level, by subgroup, and then remaining goal years. Okay. Moving into English two, so looking to improve to seventy-six percent at approaches, fifty-six percent meets, and eleven percent masters. So not as many gains there because we performed well on English two of our baseline school year, 2023. And same structure on this, that the 2019 data includes the entire population, twenty-one through twenty-six is the subset of ninth grade, excuse me, in this case, ninth or tenth graders taking English two. And then broken out by performance level, by subgroup, and remaining goal years. Okay, moving into the second portion of House Bill III, which is our math goals. So for pre-K four numeracy, again, this is one of the only ones that's not recalculated, so looking to increase the percentage of pre-K four students who score on track from eighty-four to ninety by the year 2026. Our goal this last year was eighty-six percent, and we, we exceeded that by one, but exceeded nonetheless, at eighty-seven percent at the end of the year, school year last year, 2023. So like to improve to eighty-eight percent at the end of this school year, eighty-nine percent in twenty-five, and then ninety percent in twenty-six. And that is broken out by subgroup and by remaining goal years. All right. And then now moving into the screeners that, back to baseline, haven't had this data yet. So at the end of the 2023 school year, for our kindergartners, we had sixty-four percent of our students achieve average or above on our math screener. And we'd like to see improvement to sixty-nine percent by the end of this year, seventy-three by 2025, and seventy-five by 2026. And that's broken out by subgroup. For first-grade numeracy, end of the year ended with fifty percent average or above, and needing to make a jump to sixty-six percent in 2024, seventy-one percent in 2025, and then seventy-five percent by 2026. And then those are broken apart by subgroup. Second grade, last year for screeners, we have forty-one percent of students that were average or above on end of the year 2023 screener. So like to improve that to fifty-seven percent at the end of this year, sixty-three percent in 2025, and then sixty-five percent by 2026. And this is broken apart by subgroup. Moving beyond screeners into now third grade, so STAR, the expansion of beyond approaches and to include meets and masters. So looking to grow from sixty-two to sixty-six at approaches or better, thirty-three to thirty-five at meets, and then twelve to thirteen percent at masters this particular year. And then the goals for twenty-five and twenty-six are also updated. And that's broken apart by performance level, subgroup, and remaining goal years. For eighth-grade math, similar change from the eighth-grade reading, where the 2019 data shows two administrations of the test, so a second attempt at taking the same test. And so updated the goals to reflect what occurred on the primary administration in 2019. So looking to move from sixty-five to sixty-nine at approaches or above, twenty-eight to thirty-one at meets or above, and then seven to eight in masters in this year, and then twenty-five and twenty-six goals also posted. And the performance levels by subgroup, by remaining goal year. And finally, for STAR, E O C Algebra One. And so looking to go from seventy-seven to seventy-eight percent at approaches or above, thirty-eight to forty-three percent at meets, and then seventeen to nineteen percent at the masters level this year. And then, of course, twenty-five and twenty-six data also available. And that is by performance level, subgroup, and goal year. And that ends the House Bill III goal update section. So moving now into District Improvement Plan. So we have an overall district reading goal, and that is the compilation of all of our grade levels, third through English two. And what we would like to do there is have all AISD students increase their performance in reading on STAR, STAR E O C, from seventy-one to seventy-three percent at approaches or above, forty-six to forty-eight percent at meets or above, and then fifteen to sixteen percent at masters. And then, of course, the 2025 and 2026 goals have also been updated. And this is those goals broken out by performance level, subgroup, and goal year. The overall district math, again, includes third-grade math through Algebra One. Have all AISD students increase their performance in math on STAR and STAR E O C from sixty-seven to seventy percent at the approaches level or above, from thirty-five to thirty-nine at the meets level or above, and then from thirteen to fifteen percent at masters. And then, of course, twenty-five and twenty-six are also updated. And so that's broken apart by performance level, subgroup, and goal year. For college career and military readiness, the, we ended the year at seventy-eight percent. Our goal was sixty-seven percent. And actually, that seventy-eight percent exceeded what we had planned to do by the year 2026. With CCMR, the categories will change in how you can earn points. It has changed every single year. It's very hard to set five-year goals for that. So even though we've exceeded what we were supposed to do by 2026, we went ahead and just updated the 2024 goal, what it was to now just moved it to eighty-five percent. So we'd like to move from seventy-eight percent to eighty-five percent this particular school year, so. We also have an attendance goal in our, our District Improvement Plan. We had that last year, and we were just barely under last year. Our goal was ninety-three percent, and we were at ninety-two point six. If I did some T E A rules on rounding, I would have accomplished this goal. But we didn't, we were point four under. So we'd like to increase our attendance rate this year from ninety-two point six to ninety-four percent. Also have a discipline goal, and so that reads that we will, AISD will decrease our rate of disciplinary recidivism of Level One and Level Two incidents from forty-five percent to thirty-five percent. So those are the less severe incidents and the, the repeat offenses of that. So we'd like to see less of those incidents being sent maybe down to the office or written up this school year. Our reporting timeline, to give you an update on the assessments that are occurring, I don't believe y'all have this slide, so if you're shuffling through and saying, I'm not really seeing what Natalie has there, this was an update after I sent y'all your presentation, so I apologize. So our big, beginning-of-the-year screener, that's going to be our pre-K through second-grade data. We'd like to bring that to the board October twenty-first. For Curriculum Assessment One, that's going to be third through high school, and those will be more related to the STAR goals. We'd like to bring that forward December sixth. The middle-of-the-year screener takes place after we get back from, from holiday break. And so we would like to bring those, the results of that forward to y'all February twenty-second. The benchmark assessment data, which is again, third through high school, where we utilize the State Intermittent Assessment, we'd like to bring that forward to y'all March twenty-first. End-of-the-year screener results, again, pre-K through second on June sixth. STAR results, August 2024, because we don't need in July. we don't need in July, we're not a hundred percent sure that we will have the data file in June. So just wanted to be safe on that one. So um so that is also, that's the reporting timeline. And so um we recommend that y'all approve the updated House Bill three district improvement plan goals and the reporting timeline as presented. And before we get to that, I'm, I'm opening up to questions.
Do I have any trustees with questions or comments? Ms. McMurro?
Thank you, Dr. Lopez. Um, I just had one very quick question and it's about attendance. Um, we had a pretty, um, I think, um, rely or um reachable goal. Uh, and we just missed that ninety-three percent. Um, I like where we're, where we're projected to head um for twenty twenty-four. But I was just curious, and this might be a question for you, Dr. Words. Um, what actions are being taken as a district for us to get us over that threshold?
Actually, this is uh something Natalie's been working on with Dr. Hill, and we can talk about that. But there are incentives being provided to uh campuses. And then we're also digging into what is the actual cause for um why students are not attending? So that we can direct our attention specifically to those um causes. And Dr. Hill, do you want to share specifically?
He was on standby.
I, I think one of the biggest levers that we're gonna try to implement this year is early intervention. And that is finding out early who these kids are that are having the, the attendance issues and then trying to get to where we can mitigate whatever that looks like. And I mean, different campuses will have different opportunities and different ways that they'll address it. But I think early, early awareness and, and, and early intervention is what we're, one of the biggest ones that we're trying to implement this year.
That's awesome to hear because I know chronic absenteeism leads to gaps and, and those gaps become so wide that that leads to dropouts. And um I'm just so grateful that we're starting early in the year um for that effort. I believe that we can do it. Thank y'all so much.
And one thing I was gonna say is, um, when we come back in October and you have a chance to approve the performance objective for campuses, you'll have all the strategies populated into the actual DIP that will talk about all the specific actions that will be intended to move all of these numbers over the course of the next year.
Mr. Will Banks?
Thank you, President Fowler. Um, so yes, Dr. Hill, and you know, as you guys know, we get paid on attendance, not enrollment. And so it was a little disappointing that we just barely missed that. Uh, but I welcome any and all strategies to try to boost that enrollment above that ninety-four percent goal. And since we're on that topic, I did have a question on that. Pre-pandemic, what was our attendance rate?
Yeah.
Do we remember?
Well, so we had, um, we actually looked at uh historical data from twenty thirteen on. And uh pre-COVID values we looked at were in between um ninety-four to ninety-six. Yeah, so but so really, also the re- research that we've done on the topic, um, that there's tiers of attendance. And so ninety-five percent, ninety-five to a hundred percent attendance is considered foundational. You, you would expect that kids are not gonna be there a hundred percent of the time. They'll have some absences from illness. Um, the, the family vacations that are unavoidable, maybe funeral deaths in the family, et cetera. So um and then certainly if they're sick, you don't want them to come to school. They need to take the days off. So um anything ninety-five percent or above would be considered um like a normal attendance rate. And so um we don't wanna be, we don't wanna be too aggressive um to, we thought about putting ninety-five percent there this year and then we thought, you know what? We're gonna go ahead and, and ease in ninety-four percent. Also did some regression analyses and ninety-four percent was um statistically an appropriate measure. Um, and so, but uh we are, would, will continue to, I, I think, move that forward to be included in our district improvement plan to get back to some of the pre-COVID um attendance rates.
Yeah, that's what I would hope for. And I think with all of these measures that we adopt, we apply the, uh, make them SMART goals. Using the acronym SMART, I think um achievable, the A in SMART is achievable. Um, I would think that there is still some deleterious effect of COVID on getting kids back to the same level of attendance that we saw pre-COVID. So I, I kinda agree with the philosophy that it would be too much uh for that to be achievable within the next year, but maybe a year or two down the line that we could see ninety-five or ninety-six hopefully. Now, my other questions were related to um pre-K kindergarten literacy in the early grades. You, you mentioned the course that we use, um, M-Class for literacy, correct?
Yes, sir.
And then MAP for math.
Yes, sir, uh except for uh pre-K, the UCLI.
Right, right. Um, so now that we have new benchmarks on those, um, can you enlighten me on how we chose, say, on um kindergarten literacy, the seventy-five percent for the target in year three? And with M-Class, do we have national benchmarks in terms of where we are versus national and state cohorts on the M-Class data?
Our data was based on a statistical model for um implementation of strategies that would, would produce a small effect size. That's typically what we see um in educational research. And so um again, wanting to be realistic um and make the goals attainable. So that was the approach that was taken in the uh goal development model.
Okay, well, uh, is it possible, does that data exist?
We can certainly look into that because this was not compared to state. Uh, this was just utilizing our own data from this past full year.
Okay, but I think it would be very helpful for my colleagues and I, I know requested data in the past. And I know it's, y'all are busy and it's kinda hard to get to it. But it really would be helpful to see where we are in these measures
Okay.
versus at least the state, if not national
Okay.
data that's provided from the vendor.
Mm-hmm.
Um, if available, because I really would like to see, are we starting behind? Where are we versus similar um demographic groups? Um, uh, similar Echo Disk campuses, students or district students? So that would be very helpful if that exists.
Okay.
And I know on M-Class, it does exist. I, I mean, on NWA MAP.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and they, um, so I would definitely would like that, that data on MAP because um, on some of these measures, it seems like we had some pretty, so you, you know, we're going through some significant jumps.
Mm-hmm.
And so, you know, going from fifty-six percent, say, on uh second grade literacy to seventy-five percent in three years, that seems like a, I'm not sure. I mean, just looking at a paper, I would question whether that was achievable.
Mm-hmm, certainly.
And we want our, we want these goals to be SMART, right?
Yes, sir. Um, and it is fifty-six uh to seventy-five, like for a second grade uh literacy. Um, and so ideally, the, the first grade cohort coming in, um, so they're at, they ended the year at sixty-one percent. So we'd like to maintain those, those kiddos to get to sixty-four percent. Um, and so keeping them at and above and then getting, gaining by three percent in their second grade school year. But it does, I mean, from the cohort prior, so the second graders in twenty twenty-three, um, it, it's an eight percent jump if we took just their data and said improve to the twenty twenty-four school year.
Okay. The numeracy goals, you know, pre-K four looks really good, promising it, starting out at eighty-four and getting to ninety. Uh, but on first grade numeracy, there's a huge jump in year one.
Mm-hmm.
Why? And so again, the same question, is such a huge jump achievable in one year?
Um, again, it's based, the model's based on a small effect size and um a small incremental increase in RIT score data um would result in moving from the fifty to the sixty-six. And so what that probably means is that we have a lot of kids that are just missing that average mark with their current RIT score. And so two or three more points would get them into the low end of the average category. Um, so.
So what she, what we, because we talked about this um when we were setting the goal and with the um, the committee. Because this is a good question that came up because it looks like that. The thing about it is, is uh MAP, you know, where when you receive a RIT score and then they give you a projected RIT score that you tried to go towards in order to show growth. Many of our kids are right on the cusp of the next RIT score. And so all they really need to do, if we had, if, if the majority of students only increased by two RIT score, two points, you would see this jump start to happen. So it looks like it's far, but it's because it's, the way I kinda think about it is um, back in the olden day when we had the uh, the ratings that exemplary and recognized and you'd have some that are sitting at eighty and some that are sitting at eighty-nine. If you have a, if you're right at the eighty-nine cusp, you're almost at exemplary. It doesn't take much to push over and then you're into that new phase. And so you see the acceleration go faster. And that's why you see that steep curve at the beginning. It's because they're close, we just have to push them over the line.
I trust. Yeah. Um, so then I guess my final question is, on especially the STAR data where, you know, we have a harder reading test. And so I, you know, I think, you know, I mentioned, you know, I guess it was a prescient comment at the time that, hey, I think we need to rethink our goals, given the new reality of the new STAR. And now here we are, one meeting later, talking about updated goals. But the thing that I've confused in the presentation is what were our goal, like, you know, number one, obviously, before we were dealing with the, were our goals based on just approaches or was it average of approaches, meets and masters?
They were just approaches before.
Yeah, and then so now we have to split them out because we get measured on how many are actually at masters, right? So I get that. So I'm all for splitting those out. It just means more data that we have to go through and approve. But given the way we're now scored, um, it's needed. The question I have, though, is it's not clear in this what the, well, so you have that and then you also have the issue in not being able to take the retest if they fell.
Mm-hmm.
So then we, we upped our goals instead of, of, you know, end of year after everyone's had a chance to, to pass, to how many passed on the first go around in April, right?
Yes, sir.
So, okay, so I still would like to compare what we, and I know we have this online. Maybe I should just look it up, but what the goal was to what it, I, you know, we, we just got this presentation not too long ago. And, and we have day jobs and we've had events. And so I haven't really dug through this data and had enough time. And this is what we as a board are required to adopt. The buck stops with us on these adopted goal, there are board adopted goals. I think, I don't know where my colleagues are, but I would like a little more time to go through these. I know this is a discussion I, actually, but one of the things I would like to do is go through, or if you could provide it, is to look at where the goals were and see just where they're adjusted and go, yeah, that's, I agree, as a trustee who has to adopt this, I agree, we need to make this adjustment. And I just don't have that right now and I'm not prepared right now. So the rest of my colleagues might be, but I, for one, am not ready.
So we made some adjustments to, the initial target was around this idea that we don't wanna move past, we wanna be at least where we were prior to COVID. There were, if you were to look at um some of the goals, they were actually increased because we've been performing well. So for example, English one and two, the goals are actually higher than they were in your last target, which we'll provide you, we can provide that to you. Where you're gonna notice an adjustment is in third and eighth grade. In third grade math, it's exactly the same target that was originally set as the five-year goal. That stayed exactly the same. There was an adjustment in reading, uh, because the, when the, when they analyzed the actual results um based on, like you said, the new exam and the way that kids are responding to it, in some situations, we were going to have to make a leap of almost fifteen points at some schools in order to reach the district target. So the district target for reading third grade in re- in reading, we had to drop it by three points. And then the other one that you'll see a drop in change is eighth grade reading and math. And that's because that original, original goal that was established by the board was established based on the idea that in eighth grade, you could take that assessment two times, which gives you better results. But now you can only take that one time. And so that goal is the other one that was adjusted. The others would be the same. So um we can provide that to you. So your change is just in summary that you're gonna see in terms of is third grade reading, eighth grade reading and math. The others are either the same or increased. And then there was, uh, that's pretty much the gist of it. Um, you're gonna see some adjustments in, in meets and masters, but that's, those were goals that were initially established. The approaches is what it was, so.
Yeah, it was the purchase for, yeah, yeah, no, and I get that. And, you know, if I'm the only one that's not prepared tonight, I get it. Um, and, you know, if we're prepared to approve these and move on, fine. But I, you know, if any other trustee is where I am in terms of wanting to look at that and go, yeah, that makes sense before they give final approval, um, feel free to join me.
Ms. McMurro?
Thank you, President Fowler. Um, Mr. Will Banks, I do understand your request and your concern. And um it's interesting because I, you know, I, I was looking this over and thinking, okay, this really, um, in the future, um, I would request, I think, would be more valuable in a workshop. So we'd have a little bit more time to digest and have um more specific discussions um with staff and just um have that really, really deep dive. Um, but looking at, looking at this and um understanding kind of the big picture, from what I understand, we're not lowering the bar on any of our um House Bill three goals. And for that reason, um, I'm comfortable um with adopting these. But I do request that in the future, we, we have a board workshop for revisiting our, our goals.
Thank you, Ms. McMurro. Ms. Richardson, are you waiting to make the motion?
No, I have questions.
I'm so sorry. I thought you were waiting to make the motion.
Ms. Richardson? Thank you for taking time to explain all this. Thank you for the really good data. What I appreciate is that we are able to look at data from twenty nineteen and compare it to where we wanna be in twenty twenty-six. I think it's very, uh, it's important how you've explained and you've put that box showing that before. This is what the old test scores gave us. This is a, this is our football test. And now we are doing a new test that looks like synchronized swimming. So we understand that, yes, a score in twenty nineteen may have been fifty-one percent, but it also may be fifty-one percent too in twenty twenty-six because they are two different tests. Thank you for making that very clear for us. And I think that's gonna be something that's very important that we convey to the community when we go out. So they understand why our scores look this way. Um, Mrs. McMurro, you said something earlier about that this is a test that regulates us. It's a test that regulates our teachers, our students. This is one test regulating all of us. So what it made me think, and Dr. Buell, you might be able to answer this better. When we look at what TEA's guidelines are for the STAR report and for parents' guidance, what we know, you know, as a parent, what I read and see, it says that um kids that are in the approaches and meets categories are gonna need intervention. So looking at these scores based on what we're going on, that means any kid who either doesn't do well or maybe they're just a kid who doesn't test well, they are now going to spend next year being pulled out. And when we look at these scores, a majority of our children are gonna be pulled out for intervention. Are we okay with that as a district and what are we gonna do? But also, I think, long-term, like our budget, what are we gonna do to help, to, to make this possible?
So when TEA provides those guidelines for parents, they're, they're talking to parents about the support that their child's gonna need to either continue to progress at that grade, at that level or to be able to grow. We recognize that many of our students um need interventions. That's one reason we've, we've historically had an intervention and enrichment time built into our day. Now we have an intervention and enrichment time at every grade level in every one of our schools. Again, this is, this is one. Again, this is, this is one test. And what's even more valuable to our teachers is that they're using the formative assessments. They're using things like the screeners, their daily instruction with kids to make those adjustments. That's really, it's good teaching. So sometimes that intervention is about the teacher realizing, my whole class struggled on this and I'm going to go back and reteach a lesson. That's an intervention. Sometimes it's about a small group or the frequency of small group. Some students might get small group reading five days a week with their teachers. Others may have a higher skills of independence and their academic ability. And they may only need three days or two days of that small group. And so teachers are constantly making those decisions. Then we also have like our intervention enrichment time that is outside of core instruction where they can again get another dose. So we have a lot of ways that we can provide those interventions within the school day for our our kids. And, you know, I think that's probably one of the best benefits of the data-driven instruction that we pull up, provide and the progress monitoring that we're doing, is that we can make those mid-course adjustments down to the student level in each one of our schools. And that's where we're really going to see the greatest impact.
Ms. Ms. Richardson, if I can just add, I think the important thing to note about that, that message that TA is actually sharing with families is under this expectation that when you reach mass, when you've mastered a standard or you've mastered the grade level, you will have achieved mastered level on the STAR exam. So what they're basically suggesting to a parent is, i- if you pass the test with approaches, you haven't reached the standard that they are expecting you to reach in terms of mastering the content for that grade level. And kids should receive additional support. And that's what they're, they're basically articulating to parents. In Arlington, we already operate around that. And the volume of students that you see articulated in these goals is actually not much different than the volume that we've seen over the last ten years. So we actually integrate interventions into the school day. We don't pull kids from their tier one instruction to give them interventions because that would be like digging one hole and creating another. They get all of their tier one instruction like normal and then we give them more during the school day. They have opportunities for additional tutoring after school, but we don't rely on that as the intervention source.
Thank you. Now, I think that exactly addresses my concern because in my head, I'm looking at these scores and picturing large groups of children being pulled out during their core instruction time. And if we are just putting Band-Aids on problems and digging a hole in another area, that doesn't help us either. So thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Buell, on your explanations there. And I concur with Ms. McMurro. I think, you know, given the importance of this in terms of our role as trustees, I think giving us the time to unpack this, roll up our sleeves and really own the DIP goals and the required by law HB three goals would be very beneficial for us. We did it once, pre-pandemic, I believe it was. And it went, the the first year we adopted our HB three goals and Natalie did a great job. Natalie and Dr. Wertz both did a great job of presenting and allowing us to unpack those. So I would highly encourage, it's kind of something of this magnitude. I I kind of liked that it was on discussion action because that gives us a chance to chew on it and then possibly come back and chew on it again. Based on though, what Ms. McMurro said, the, you know, and I agree, Dr. Wertz was able to fill me in beforehand that the goal, the end goal, the five-year goal didn't change. And so because of that, I I am more like, if you guys are ready and we do have a motion, I would vote for it. But I would highly encourage us to take the time to unpack these going forward in in future years so that we do have the time to know what we're voting on and and be able to defend them as trustees because they are our goals. So.
Very good point, Mr. Mr. Willbanks. Ms. Richardson?
Thank you for taking time to answer all of our questions. I think if we are good, then I would like to move to adopt the HB three District Improvement Plan Goals and Performance Objectives and Reporting Timelines as you have presented.
I have a motion for Ms. Richardson. Do I have a second? I have a second for Ms. Haynes. Please vote. Motion carries. Thank you. We will now address the consent. Thank you, ladies, so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
We will now address the Consent Agenda items, which consist of routine items grouped together for approval as one item. Unless removed from the Consent Agenda, then these items will be acted upon with no discussion. Trustees, are there any requests for items to be withdrawn from the Consent Agenda for further discussion? Seeing none, is there a motion to accept the agenda?
Move to approved consent.
Thank you, Mr. Chapa. Do I have a second? I have a second for Ms. McMurro. Please vote. Motion carries. Thank you. Now we come to our open forum for non-agenda items. Ms. Forsberg, do we have any requesters registered to address the board regarding non-agenda items?
Yes, ma'am. We have one requister.
Thank you, Ms. Forsberg. I'll now call Mr. Richard Weber. Welcome, Mr. Weber.
Should I start? Madam President, you forgot the consent agenda. Minor detail. That was the consent? I thought that was the plan. Okay, sorry. Communications is what I want to talk about. Two years ago, fifteen months ago, June of 2022, I stood up here and addressed the board on the exact same subject, nicely asking for an increase in the two-minute time limit. Needless to say, it didn't happen. Asking nicely, obviously, it didn't result in anything. Communication has a lot to do with transparency. I've tried communicating by email with some of the members of this board. That turns out to be useless also. Not a good record. Now, I spoke earlier on the subject tonight. Ask weas everything in two minutes. There was a lot left on the cutting room floor. Some of the things were like the above meets or above should not, goals should never be less than fifty percent. There's no way in the world. Personally, I think it should be seventy percent or more. But I didn't get to mention that and other things. Just because two minutes is not enough time to describe a problem and then offer the solutions and why. And that's just plain and simple, two minutes is not enough time to to communicate everything that needs to be communicated. Please increase the two-minute limit. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. We now come to the time for reports. Dr. Wertz?
I'd like to share some information about some exciting news that's happened since my last superintendent's report at our last board meeting. If you'll bear with me, I have a few things to go through. Our students at the P-Tech at Bowie High School have a unique opportunity to work with the NASA HUNCH program, H-U-N-C-H. This program is designed for high school students to put together projects that could possibly be used in NASA missions to both moon, the moon and Mars. And there's a biomedical science component involved and our students can work on projects from anything from IV drips to edible packing. And the projects that are selected for the national program will get tested at the International Space Station. And we want to wish all the best of luck to our teams that are putting together their projects. And then our very own Rhodes Scholar, Isaac James, you've heard me talk about him before. He was back talking to students at Arlington High School about his experiences and it took, and what it took to be just one of thirty-two students nationally selected for the prestigious program. Isaac, who went to Duff Elementary and and then on to Bailey Junior High, has been really busy since leaving our district. He's graduated from UT Austin and has been interning at the White House. And that is just a huge, and that was just a tune-up as Arlington was his final stop before heading to the University of Oxford to continue his studies. So we want to congratulate Isaac for all the success he's experiencing. And thank you to everyone who's involved in Saturday's Operation Graduation Initiative. It was a great day to see so many of our Arlington ISD staff members volunteer and and pound the pavement, knocking doors throughout the district to encourage our students to come back to school. It's truly a labor of love, people volunteering their time on a Saturday for everyone involved. And it always is done in the best interest of our students by putting them first. So I just want to personally extend my thanks to everyone at the Lamar team for making me feel so welcome that day. And last Friday, we kicked off Hispanic Heritage Month throughout the district. It started in a big way with a mariachi performance at Wimbush World Language Academy. And throughout the month, we're going to highlight staff members and events that that are happening all across our district. It's a big month for us as nearly half of our student population are Hispanic. And I also want to thank the entire staff and student population at Little Elementary for making our senior staff feel so welcome on Tuesday morning. We were able to start the day, meeting with staff and talking with students. And we were able to do all sorts of different tasks with them. And the visit, after we were done with our our meeting and our visit, we got to go into our own meeting and discuss our things. But it was really great to have a chance to see all the happy students. They have a very special culture over at Little Elementary and they made everyone feel very, very welcome. And then last week, I got to speak to members of our faith community at our first stakeholder luncheon of the year. They play such an important role in our community and in the success of our students. And it was great to share with them so many of the exciting things that are happening here across our district. I want to thank Aaron Peralas and his team for hosting the event and for everyone at the Dr. Marcelo Cavassa CPPA for making the event a huge success. And then finally, last but not least, this very morning was a really great one at Ashworth Elementary School where it hosted its annual Pin Wheels for Peace. Students, pin wheels were planted in front of the school for World Peace Day and there were outstanding performances by the Ashworth Choir, the drill and cheer teams from Sagan High School, as well as the Sagan drum line. It was actually, it was really fun. It was great to visit with teachers, members of the AP, the Arlington Police Department, and of course, our students. And thanks to Principal Stacy Maddox, as well as our teacher Karen Piverol for putting on such an awesome event. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Wertz. Do I have any trustees with reports? I have one. Oh, let's go ahead. Ms. Richardson?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I was excited to join today, Pin Wheels for Peace. That was so much fun. I just have to tell you, that was the first time, I didn't even know, they've been doing it for fifteen years and it was amazing. So thank you for letting me join you there. That was a lot of fun. Two other things to mention, today is North Texas Giving Day. And I know a lot of us have different things that we support and celebrate on this day. Two very special ones I want to mention that hit big markers today that both support our district is the Arlington Education Foundation. And they have raised five, five thousand dollars today. And they are a group that gives grants and funds our teachers' requests. And so we are very thankful for them. The other one is one that I get to volunteer with during the week and it's New Day Backpack Ministry. And they deliver food through volunteers to kids that will not be able to have food over the weekend. And it's food that they can take care of themselves, whether it's ramen noodles or granola bars. And they raised over thirty-eight thousand dollars today to fund this. So they just do a lot for our district and I am so excited for both of these groups today. One last thing, we have special needs bus drivers in our district that go above and beyond. And this week, we have, just a shout out to something that kind of went wrong, not kind of, something went wrong. The lift broke on the bus and they could not get the special needs student on. Not, no one's fault. That bus driver and aide made sure that student got on the bus and to school. So I want to give a shout out to Angelita Christopher, who is the bus driver, Linnell Williams, the bus aide, and Lilian Gonzalez, the special trip foreman who handles all the logistics, who was able to get our student to Lamar and let him have a great day with his nurse. And just, they went above and beyond to make that happen. They easily could have said, not today, we'll see you tomorrow. But they got that student to school and back home.
Thank you for sharing that. That is beautiful. Well, I had the privilege of attending the real Texas Rangers Law Enforcement Day that was held at our Dan Diaper Center. And there were the real Texas Rangers there along with DPS officers, sheriff's deputies and many more. The intent was for students to know more about what the law enforcement officials do from day to day and really to get them interested in perhaps pursuing a career in law enforcement. And you're seeing pictures here from, they call their assets, all the assets that they brought to the Dan Diaper Center. Look at that with those guns. Y'all, it was, it was real. It was real. But they brought all of this equipment out there and we bussed, we we had, they called it a field trip. And so from ten until twelve, certain students from across the district, high school students, I believe it was freshman and sophomore and anyone that was interested in law enforcement, they bussed them to the Dan Diaper Center from ten to twelve. And then from twelve to two, different groups came in from across the district and were able to participate and learn and see the equipment and talk with, oh, there I am. And talk with, talk with officers that were there. And it was really well received. And I was so pleased with how much the students were involved in asking questions and really focusing on what the officers had to say and so well-mannered. And it was, it was a really nice morning and I appreciated being included in that. And that concludes my report. Ms. Secretary, do we have any items to consider?
Thank you, President Fowler. Mr. Willbanks, did you have additional MAP data? And make sure I've got this correct. The MAP data that was reported to us today in the House Bill III Goals presentation, we want to get that same data in comparison to national norm reference data for each slide that encompass MAP. Is that correct?
As well as state.
As well as state.
As well as state.
And not just MAP, but also M class.
Okay, so let me recap. M class and MAP comparisons to the state and the nation. Is that right? Okay. Other than that, I do not have anything else to report.
Thank you, Ms. Secretary. And with that, it is nine twenty-six. We're adjourned and going into closed.